I now call the Board of Commissioners special call meeting on June 29th at four o'clock to order. I'm going to ask the clerk to do the roll call.
Chairman Morgan.
Here.
Vice Chairman Chance.
Here.
Commissioner McLendon.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Fuller.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
At this time, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented for the special call meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries seven zero.
We're going to move into the business session. The first thing of order is 4.1, the City of Carrollton, a tax allocation district. And I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Montreal McLendon.
Yes, ma'am. I can make a motion at this point. We're good with that. All right. I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the proposed resolution of the Board of Commissioners consenting to the TAD IGA and development agreement with the City of Carrollton as presented, and further authorize the chairman to execute the IGA and development agreement with such changes as may be approved by the chairman and the county attorney.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. We'll begin discussion and questions.
I'd like to say to the City of Carrollton, the mayor and Mr. Brooks, it is a pleasure to work with you. And every time I meet with you, I come away from the meeting with a good feeling, and I really appreciate the mutual respect and ability to work together very easily. I feel that this TAD, it will not have any bond aspect to it. It will not soak up the revenue from our districts, me representing an agriculture district. And I feel that what will be produced is something that my constituents in District Five can benefit from. And we appreciate Carrollton growing and being a vibrant center for Carroll County.
Commissioner, I just want to make this clear, that this IGA that I'm looking at here is part of this agreement. It goes with the TAD.
That's correct.
Yes, Commissioner McLendon said the resolution that the board is adopting approves the IGA for the TAD. And the development agreement, which, again, the mayor and council have not had an opportunity to both consider or approve, the proposed changes to the IGA that the county has, or the development agreement, but have received those requests. But they are contingent upon both being adopted and approved by the mayor and city council.
So we don't get one without the other?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I would like to say that I appreciate Commissioner McLendon, and also the City of Carrollton and their administration and their consultants that got some information from me. To me, a part of looking at TADS and giving something up is what are we receiving back in the moment? And obviously, sales tax through lost and sploths are funds that we will be able to reap throughout the entirety of this agreement. And so I did want to kind of dumb down and look into the details of that. And so I appreciate that being facilitated through the commissioner and for the City of Carrollton for providing that information.
I'd say ditto to everything they said. I'm excited about the, just the development in those areas. You know, being born and raised in Carrollton, seeing, you know, there's some just areas in our city that we need to address. And not only was this TAD put together very well without having the bond attached to it, but I get to see some of those areas that not necessarily blight on the city, but they do need updating. I mean, you know, I've been around here a long time, so I'm excited about that. And I do know that everybody in Carroll County benefits from it. As Commissioner Reynolds say, you know, everybody comes to the cities, whether it's here in Villareca, and they eat and whatever, and they go back home. And so, you know, giving them a nice place to come, being able to bring in more restaurants and things like that, and businesses into our city, I think is a really, really, really good thing. We have a growing population of young professionals. This gives us an opportunity to kind of address some of the things they want in Carrollton as well. So I'm really excited about this.
If there's no further comments or any questions for the attorney or for Commissioners McLendon, I'll ask all those in favor. Any opposed?
Motion carries seven zero.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner McLendon and Commissioner Fuller for working with the City of Carrollton. And thank y'all for being here today. Next on the agenda is 4.2, the City of Villareca, the tax allocation district. And I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Chance.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, I would like to recognize Mayor McDougal, who was in the audience. Thank you for being here today, Mayor of the City of Villareca. Commissioners, as you remember, some months ago, we had pretty extensive conversations and several votes that transpired regarding the Villareca TAD. We ultimately sent an approval, a final approval back. And at the time, the City of Villareca did not feel comfortable accepting that. But some talks and negotiations continued moving forward because they felt very strongly about the project. And they continued those negotiations at that point in time with the Carroll County School Board, which ultimately, you have seen, they came to a consensus and agreement for the school board to relinquish some of their millage toward the TAD in question. At this time, I'd also like to thank the Carroll County School Board, who kept myself, and not speaking for Chairman Morgan, but kept Chairman Morgan abreast as well, on some things that were going on, and that they were going to come to an agreement. And I appreciate that. A part of their agreement that I'm going to discuss today about a joint review committee is that the school board and the City of Villareca also wanted to make sure that Carroll County, irregardless if we came to an agreement ourselves or not moving forward, that the county would have some seat at the table. And we were represented just from those two negotiations, without ourselves at the table, we were included in that in a joint review committee. So I thank both the city and the school board for their leadership and their inclusiveness, if you will, in that. Commissioners, you have before you kind of a summary sheet that has been put together. It's got some blue-green and orange bubbles on the sheet, and it's kind of a summary. So not trying to go back through everything and relive everything that we've gone through in the past. I wanted to try to get to the meat of what is in this agreement that's before you, and also kind of compare to some things that were in the original agreement from 2022. So if you will look, the bond was originally going to be around $35 million is what was presented. That's been reduced to a little over $21 million. So that's a substantial reduction in the bond amount. Also, the bond, right now, it was going to be 20-plus years before it was expected to be paid off. So they were looking right now at about an 18-year bond. There's the possibility that it could be around 14 years if things stay steady. They tried to put some conservative numbers with this. And then if the Board of Commissioners decides to be a part of this, we think that that would reduce down to an early payoff at around 11 years to pay the full bond off. And here, again, those are estimations, but those estimations also include some professional consultants that have been involved as well. We have gone from the original five-node request of 1,578 units, residential units, down to 1,118. So in that reduction, some of the nodes were removed, 320 apartments were removed, and 140 townhomes were removed. And so if you remember, one of the concerns from the board was just rapid growth in the city, even though it's not our job necessarily to govern the city, obviously, but the city is within Carroll County. And we were concerned overall, from an umbrella approach, what would that massive growth look like overnight, if you will. So I do want to commend the city and the school board and ourselves in looking at this negotiation that is substantially lower in the number of residential units. I do want to home in on the positive on the retail components. They're expecting a large grocery anchor there, a large sit-down restaurant, a gas station, a bank, some fast-food restaurants, a car wash, a tire store, and some out parcels. And those are all related to the Fuqua development. So remember, there is the potential for another development within that area, but the Fuqua is the main presentation that's at the table, if you will, that's going to take up the majority breadth of this swath of property. Moving on down, some estimations that were done with lost and sploshed. Now, this is based off, this would be annual sales tax revenue, and this is based off a full build-out. So understand, they're in the process of grading the property now. Probably agreements will continue to happen as far as what will be built on the property. But looking at the full build-out of what the Fuqua development is looking like, you're looking at about $827,000 in sales tax revenue. One thing I want to point out here is this is brand-new sales tax revenue. This was just a big swath of property, the majority of it that was wooded area. So this isn't just refined numbers. These are brand-new numbers for intake for the county, which are very positive. If you'll look at the total investment of what is being projected, here again, at full build-out, you're looking at a little over $275 million in full market value. If you look at the county's portion of the millage, just taking an estimate at 7.58 mils, obviously, that will fluctuate over time. But that's around $834,000. So our incremental increase that we would be giving up, so to speak, is $780,000. So the current amount that we're currently receiving, even if we agree with the TAD, we're going to continue to receive that. This would only be given up during the life of the TAD. Moving down, I want to talk about one thing that I was very passionate about in the original negotiations. This was something that was key for me, that I was not willing personally to move forward without having this particular agreement put into the IGA. And that is the, basically, the insurance premium tax that the City of Villareca would start paying to Carroll County. So you can see, beginning in 2024, by the diagram before you, we would receive $100,000, 2025, $200,000, '26, $300,000. And that keeps escalating up by $100,000 each year, and it caps out at $500,000 annually. So in the fifth year, and then the fifth year, or every year after the fifth year, we would be receiving half a million dollars in insurance premium tax. I also want to point out, this is coming out of the City of Villareca's general fund, okay? This is not added back into the bond. This is not something that's quote-unquote "being shared" by all three entities. This would be exclusively coming from the City of Villareca. And this is also a change from the first agreement. The first agreement was going to have this added back in to the bond. So this is a very big deal for us, and it's a very big deal for the City of Villareca to step forward. Also in this, many of you know about the bypass that is going through to kind of get the trucks out of downtown Villareca, and it's going to let out on Dallas Highway. That has been in the makes for 20-something years, maybe even more. Land clearing and so forth has happened. So in that area, you're going to continue to see some growth on the outside of the particular TAD. But the main driveway of Mirror Lake Boulevard and Punkin Town Road, that is one and the same road, will kind of run into, within a few hundred feet of where that interchange is going to come into Dallas Highway. So the city has agreed, as that growth happens in the future, and assuming that all that will happen in that area, that they were going to donate some property to us. I know I've spoken with the fire chief previously. I did speak with the fire chief again, that the general location of where this at would be very advantageous to Carroll County, not only in providing fire services on that end of the City of Villareca, but also quickly accessing some of the furthest points that we have in the county and unincorporated as well. If we decided not to build a fire station there, there's no commitment that we have to build it in the moment. And I think the backing up of some of these residential units, there may need to be a time lapse just to see how things transpire over the next few years, but that that would be available. If it's ever in point in time that we don't need it, the City of Villareca is willing to buy back that land that they're giving to us for free at fair market value at that point in time. You all know about the current fire station that we're trying to build on Highway 78. We're getting very close to breaking ground there. The City of Villareca has agreed to rebuild some of South Street, which will run down the corridor length of our lot and the old GSP location on Highway 78. And the trucks will enter into the back of that particular lot. So they've agreed to kind of beef up that road, if you will, and also do some other improvements to help with turning radius as well. They've also agreed to waive all the building permits and the TAP sewer fees as well for that particular project that we've got ongoing in the moment. Moving down to one of the last items that you see here on your list is talking about the joint review committee. And so to read these out loud, it would be a review of residential developments on Highway 61 south of I-20, review of proposed multifamily developments and high-density developments, a review of annexations south of the southernmost point in the city on Highway 61. Currently, there are three school representatives from the district, three city representatives, and then one. And so what we are asking, and I have spoken with city leadership, and I've spoken with the school board leadership, is that we would be moved up to two county representatives on that particular board, which I think is in line when you consider the millage rate value that's nearly triple at the school board than what we are. And you look at all the dynamics, I think moving that up to two is fair. In the motion, if it is so wishes of the board, that is obviously something that, including this entire agreement, that the City of Villareca would have to approve on their council, mayor and council, and something that the school board would have to approve as well. If you will remember, many of these items I just read over were things that we were trying to negotiate originally with the City of Villareca as well, such as annexations and so forth. So this has kind of been masterly crafted into a review committee that will make recommendations in reviewing such that's been listed, and take that back to mayor and council. There's some other particulars. I won't go into all of them, but one that's significant as well in the agreement is up to $25,000. There'll be a reimbursement for professional services of some of the outside entities that we've hired, along with our own legal team. We've had some research and so forth with some of our other departments, such as the tax commissioner and tax assessor. And I appreciate their efforts as well. Ms. Bearden is here and is always very gracious to help us anytime we call and need data. So thank you. We'll continue to get annual reporting, monetary reporting, and different things on the project, but something that we'll be able to keep a focus on as time goes on. It won't be something that's just approved and one and done. So some of the key components to wrap up before I could answer any questions for you. We're reducing the size of the bond that was originally in place. We're reducing the number of residential units that were originally in place. There's been an additional seat, hopefully, that will be created on the review committee. The city is essentially backing the bond here. We're creating a new revenue stream by receiving insurance premium funds to assist in fire rescue operations. If you look back in the history with the state of Georgia, in 1911, the insurance premium tax came about, and it was specifically designed at that time to fund state fire marshal services. And now it's kind of evolved over time into local monies, and that that's used essentially to help with fire services in local areas. It's still referred to as the insurance premium tax, but in the history relating back to 1911, it's kind of commonly known as the fire insurance premium tax. Another point I want to bring out is that we would be receiving funds immediately. So whether it takes them 18 months to build out 75% of the development, or it takes them two years or whatever amount of time it could possibly take, next year we're going to start getting $100,000, and then the next year, $200,000. The other thing to keep in mind is if we did not do this development, you're not going to receive the assessment values immediately. You've got building that's going on in one year. You've got the next year, there's probably some more building. Then you've got assessments of where that's at. And then you've got another year that the assessments from the previous year are essentially due. So you've got a time lapse here. It's not so cut and dry that just on day one, if we didn't do the deal, we're going to start receiving that incremental increase. That's simply not the case. But by taking this particular approach, we would start receiving monies immediately. One thing I want to preface it on in ending my comments is there are a lot of comments, or there are a lot of thoughts out there. And I respect every individual's approach to looking at TADS in this situation. But I can say, I'm certainly not an expert, but I probably have dove into this as much as anyone in this room, as far as locally, as far as looking at the data, looking at the information and how it works. And I can tell you from this plan, unincorporated county residents are not supplementing this development. And I want to repeat that again. County unincorporated residents are not supplementing this. And why is that? The reason is, even though we're giving up one area of money, we're taking in another area of money, and that's the insurance premium. And so I want to thank the mayor and the leadership there for agreeing and understanding that we've made significant investments in the City of Villareca. Those residents are our residents as well on the Carroll County side, but we are building them a new fire station that will service primarily the City of Villareca, even though it still services some unincorporated. We've bought millions of dollars worth of equipment, QRVs, the quick response vehicles. The chairman has talked about that, and the fire chief previously, where we're trying to save money in making those units run throughout the city in a faster approach and not having to run our million-dollar pieces of equipment on every single call. So we've made significant improvements and significant investment in the City of Villareca. And I think the city recognizes that and understands, while they can't necessarily issue maybe the entirety that we probably should get at some point in time, this is a good faith step forward in moving towards that. And that leads me to the service delivery strategy. Ever since I have been in office, I did believe that whoever was providing the fire services, that I believe that that's who should be receiving that insurance premium tax money. So this is a step in that right direction. Once we get to the point of ever renegotiating the SDS, we'll look and see at that point in time where if there's additional funds that may need to be committed. But this will go towards whatever agreement that may be, assuming it is greater in the future, and I think it will. And so from that component alone, that is why this is not being funded, in my opinion, by unincorporated. It is essentially helping pay for itself. I think from the city's standpoint, without speaking for them directly, this is a way for allowing everyone to come to the table. They understand that the county has concerns about rapid growth patterns. This is the best way I see forward of us having a seat at the table and helping manage that with them as best we can, understanding that we're not their elected body. So with that, I'll yield and see if I can answer any questions or clarify anything. But I do feel very confident that this is a positive agreement, and I think it puts the county in the best seat moving forward for all of the reasons that I've just gone over.
Oh, go ahead. Well, let me, mine's short and sweet. You know how I feel about TADS that are attached to a bond. You've put a good deal together here. I appreciate this. But apparently on Monday, there was some discussion of this on a radio program, one of the local radio programs, or it was a news piece or something. And I was not even aware of it. But I started getting phone calls immediately from folks in my district. And I'll have to vote the will of the people in my district.
I respect your comments. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, all of you know, it's no secret, and wouldn't want it to be, I was adamantly opposed to this. And Mr. Mayor, you have been in plenty of those meetings. And the reason that I was is because primarily that it, at that time, would have soaked up revenue from the county, including revenue that might be available to my district, and put that right into Villareca. And I just could not be for that. The other thing is that it, with all of the rooftops proposed, it seemed to me like the opening the floodgates to Douglas County and welcoming all that into, with outstretched arms, to Carroll County. And my constituents just don't want that. So I had to oppose that and felt strongly about it. I do want to commend Commissioner Chance. And I know we have spoken about this, Commissioner, and you have, much to your credit, put forth a lot of effort. And I do appreciate the result of that, and working with the City of Villareca and your changed stance on this. Because of the revenue situation now, not soaking up revenue and potential revenue from my district, and being revenue neutral, as you will, and I appreciate you making a pointed remark about that, Commissioner Chance. And because by nearly 30%, the amount of units has been reduced, I do feel that there is not good ground now for me to continue to be opposed. And it's something that I can now support. It is in line with what I feel is a fair deal. And I will change my stance. And I feel if any constituents want to contact me, of course, they can. But I feel that it would be their choice as well, given these significant changes from what we had several months ago.
I want to say that I think Mayor McDougal and Commissioner Chance have brokered a great deal for both parties, and I'm on board.
I just got a question for Mr. Chance on the review committee down there. So if we have a disagreement there, how would that process? How would that proceed in that committee? Do you know?
So the committee will review things as listed, such as annexation, large developments, and that sort of thing, as I just went over. And so we would, in panel, have a review process, and then vote. And then that recommendation would be taken back to the city council. You can sit and say in one end, as well, does it mean anything? And I think it does. We have a lot of boards that we have appointed here at Carroll County that we take under heavy advisement what they bring back to us. In talking with legal counsel, and Mr. Jackson may want to interject himself, obviously, the committee want to have the power to override the local elected officials in that community. But in the same note, considering the partnership and considering the city's stance that they want us at the table, and they understand from an education standpoint, the school board needs to be involved. They understand from a fire service protection and a safety perspective, since we're providing those services, Carroll County needs to be at the table. So I can't speak as to, will the mayor and city council ultimately vote, even though the mayor only votes in a tie, to take that recommendation? But I do think it has probably as much legal teeth as it can have without overstepping the boundaries of understanding they're still their own elected body.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no further questions or discussion, I believe you already made the motion. No, you just made the comment. Montreal made the motion originally to get it started. You just started the discussion. So is there a motion on the table in a second?
Yes. Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution by the Board of Commissioners consenting to the TAD IGA and development agreement with the City of Villareca as presented, which will remain contingent upon the city's official approval and that of the Carroll County School Board as it relates to the joint committee venture portion between all three entities. entities, and further authorizes the chairman to execute the IGA and development agreement with any such changes as may be approved by the chairman and the county attorney.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. If there's no further questions or discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries, six one.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Chance. I will now go into 4.3 about concern of proposed annexation on Highway 166 bypass and a portion of 196 Folds Road, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Fuller.
Madam Chairman, I have met with the developer on this, and my main problem with this is that it is a 300 unit, if I'm correct, apartment complex in an area that is already starting to see overcrowdedness. If you look down Cedar Street, you get to the end of Cedar Street, you've got those townhouses going on there, and there's more development behind it. And back up toward Thurman and Postal Way, they're about to put in another apartment complex there, or townhouses, I can't remember which. So that area is starting to see a lot of development, and it's all multifamily development. That piece of property is currently zoned for residential in the county, but it would be one acre lots. Now, if they would agree to bring it, to annex it, keep it one acre lots, not do multifamily dwellings, I wouldn't have any heartburn with that. But they are changing the zoning, and that's one of the parameters, if you're going to annex, then we sort of have a leg to stand on here. The bypass, this is my big concern. That bypass was constructed to get traffic around Carrollton. That bypass is turning into a developmental highway. So once it, but once we get it developed, it's no longer a bypass. It's just traffic moving on a four lane highway. If the Bethany development goes in, that's 200-plus houses, and they're going to shop in Carrollton, and they're going to go around the bypass. So you have all that traffic coming down from the proposed Bethany development, and now we're going to throw a 300-unit apartment complex on the bypass. And I haven't seen anything in any of the paperwork that I got. What's DOT? Where do they stand on this? I mean, there's going to have to be a light there. Commissioner, or Montrell and I talked about that this morning, getting back and forth across that road. So there's just a lot of concerns. I think this would be better served as commercial or industrial than a multifamily unit apartment complex. So I'm opposed to annexing this into the city.
I've talked with the, well, first comment, I guess, should be that this is in the very, very edge of my district. My district kind of makes a little square there and does not include any part of Cedar Street, but does include that portion of Folds Road down to the bypass for just a short distance there of that bypass. I've also talked with the developer and with the city. And again, both meetings and conversations have been productive and amicable and very pleasant. As far as the single family and changing the zoning and that kind of thing, or not changing the zoning, keeping it single family, that, from what I was told, is very rocky soil, and the required septic systems for individual, single-family homes cannot be constructed there. I think the intention is that because of all the rock, that there would be bore under the four lane, and that the bore under the four lane would then connect to the city sewer on the opposite side of the four lane, which would then accommodate sewer needs both for the retail shops and for the residential. As far as the, what's going to be proposed there, my understanding is although they can't get actual contracts with these companies or firms now before this is going forward, that there are going to be restaurant establishments in the front, which seem to be desirable for the city of Carrollton, and also for my constituents who come to the city, as I mentioned before, for such things. And then high-end apartments in the back, and from the information we've been given, it seems like the high-end apartments, at least from our information, is, it's documented, the proposed rent is well over $1,000 a month even for the one-bedroom, one-bath apartments. So it doesn't seem like it would be a detrimental, if you will, development. It seems like it would have advantages. Yes, I agree, there would be more traffic at that point on the four lane. That is typically what happens. I believe keeping this type of development in the city area and along growth corridors is preferable, and we don't want this down in Rootville or outside of Hoitsburg. And my, I would totally have a different comments that I'm making now if this was anywhere else in my district. But I think at this location, it seems to be fairly suitable, and I do think the developer, being local and having been a resident here for decades, has the best interest of the community in mind and would ensure that this is a, is a good thing. Also, as the city mentioned to me, as I express some concern about apartments as well, but not only from the aspect of it being high-end apartments, but there's also the aspect that having one owner of a complex to deal with, if there are any problems, is an advantage. And I can see that. So those are my comments, and I have not heard anything negative from my constituents, and I do tend to be in favor of this.
Well, that's, again, this is, I brought this up because, see, the end of Cedar Street and all of there is 4th District. And I'm getting, that's where I've started getting calls from people that live over on Thurman Street, Cedar Street, because they see increased traffic in that area. What it is, it's going to increase traffic up and down Cedar Street, probably on Bankhead.
Commissioner Fuller, my question would be, based off what you're proposing, simply to send back to the city of Carrollton that we are opposed to this annexation altogether. I wonder if there's any common ground to be had, and I'm not asking you to change what your motion would be, but just in discussions, if there would be common ground to ask the city of Carrollton to table and review the information further to see if there's any alternatives. I personally don't feel that I have enough information to make an informed decision. I will say, this board has repeatedly expressed about rapid growth and what that means, and I think that's one reason why we always refer to apartments, or at least myself, as rapid growth. It has, to me, it has nothing to do with the standard of any individual that lives in there, whether they're rich, poor, or middle-class working families. I think it's the dynamics of you're bringing in so many potentially new residents into one area, how does that impact, you know, the area? So I always, when I hear about apartments, I don't necessarily home in, are they high-end or are they not? I home in on that is a mass new residential area that's going in, and how is it going to impact the area? Now, obviously, the city of Carrollton are smart individuals, and I know that they would think through these things as well, and we expect growth to happen in our cities, Carrollton, Villareca, being the two largest cities. So for me, you know, I could support the idea of them taking a second look. But here again, I don't know how the votes are going to land, but just to simply say we're completely opposed to the annexation, I don't know where that's going to land us either.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'd be willing to send it back. I mean, it's kind of, they're sitting here, it's kind of up to them whether or not they want to take another look at it.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor. I am very much in favor. It seems like everywhere we go and stick a shovel in the ground, we've got a problem with it. And there's going to be growth. There's going to be growth because we've got a great city. So I am 100% with it.
So Commissioner Fuller, would you like to make a motion on what you'd like to do with this, and then we'll go from there and still have discussion questions if necessary?
Well, I would, I would make a motion to deny annexation of this piece of property into the city.
Okay. At this time, is there a second? So for lack of a second, the motion dies?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't think we need to make a motion to approve annexation.
No.
So we will be good to go. So thank you, Commissioner Fuller.
Certainly.
At this time, we're going to move into item 44. We have Newton Jennings here with Marsha McClellan on our annual casualty, property and casualty liability and risk management insurance proposal. I've been outside talking to the flowers, getting them to grow, so I guess that's why I have no voice and you couldn't really hear me.
I heard you, I just wanted to make sure you were going to come up. Hello, how's everyone doing today?
Good.
Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, thank you all for having me. 7-1 is the annual renewal for nine primary lines of property and casualty insurance. Everybody should have been provided with a, an outline summary of each one of those coverages and a corresponding premium. You've got nine lines of coverage, including general liability, property, crime, umbrella excess, employment practices liability, public officials liability, commercial auto, law enforcement, and cyber. Has everyone been able to review this? Everybody said, I know I talked to most of the, spoke to most of the commissioners. If I can start, are there any questions? Would you like me to pedal through each line from exposures, losses? Any questions on the document that's been provided?
You answered everything I had the other day when we spoke, so I'm good.
Okay, good. Just high points. Two primary silos that control where your premiums go or exposures. Property values were moved up to in excess of $216 million, that's all the buildings, property inside those buildings, et cetera. We added an additional 57 vehicles or units throughout the course of the year, an additional 38 firefighters. Overall employees were up 31. So from an exposure perspective there, I would call that, especially on the property, a significant increase in exposures, which is going to translate to the premium. As well, we've all talked about the losses, there's some work we need to do there, especially on the auto lines of coverage. Those are not exactly where we need to be that contributed to some of those premium increases as well. But I'm happy to pedal through any specific exposures, losses, anything that y'all would like to touch on if you feel necessary. Otherwise, I think everything's been provided that you would need, and just want to make sure we're here to address any questions or concerns that you may have.
As Commissioner Bailey stated, you know, we, I met with you in your office, and we talked about some of the dynamics that are going on and so forth, and, you know, I had some information that I reviewed there and obviously reviewed. So I don't have any questions, which is normally abnormal for me, but we've spent a good bit of time looking at the information, so thank you.
You're welcome. Worth noting, coverage is going to remain with Liberty. That was a little up in there for a little while, but I do want to commend the commission, the team at the county. I think there was some, some very good progress in working with Liberty to be able to bring them back to the table and offering terms, which proved to be much more favorable than the alternative. So hats off to the commission and their team for making that happen. So, thank you all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the insurance proposal as presented.
Could I make a comment?
I was just about to ask, is there any more questions or discussion?
Well, I do appreciate the, Newton, your significant efforts in this, and I know you have spent a lot of time and effort, and it is appreciated. We've talked a couple times or more, and I know you've done all you can. We've talked about deductibles and so on, and I am glad that the one insurance company came back to the table. And I think for the situation we find ourselves in, we are doing the best we can, and I appreciate all you've done toward that end.
Thank you for saying that, and proud to be part of the team. Thank you.
Well, there's no further discussion or questions. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of accepting the insurance proposal as presented? Any opposed?
Motion carries, six one.
Great. At this time, we're going to go into executive session for real estate. We do not expect to come back and have any vote or any action, so I will ask for a motion in a second to go into executive session, please.
Motion to go into executive session?
Say it, clerk.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? And when we come back from executive session, we'll then also move into our work session. And when we come back from executive session, we'll then also move into our work session.
If I could have a motion in a second to resume back to our regular, to exit out of executive session and resume back to our regular meeting.
Motion.
Executive.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? At this time, I'll take a motion in a second to adjourn the special called meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Sherlinda, you ready for us?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, so at this my eleventh meeting. Let me switch